So this was Warren's special Select Board meeting with Hardwick Electric Department. I'm just gonna call us to order, is all right with you, am I right? All right, so, oh, it says Select Board here. So you called me to order, it is not fog, it's like 5:11. First thing is set an adjusted agenda, which we may want to do. The only thing really that's on here is a recap from our last meeting in, which was in May. Do you want to add some other points of discussion?
I think we want to talk about how we work together and communication.
Okay.
Between, and how to avoid some of the pitfalls that we have.
It came up at our last Select Board meeting about minutes online. I don't know if we could talk about the website and how to support HED and getting those minutes to be available? That's kind of been communication, but...
Yeah, minutes are part of it, but minutes in my mind are after the fact.
Sure.
Just thinking more before the fact.
Could we also provide an update about our new energy coordinator?
Yes.
Be good to know what the Energy Committee is supposed to be doing.
Yeah, wouldn't you?
And what its function is, how it relates to the Electric Department, if at all.
Okay, we'll just, we'll pick up that. What else do people have?
Are you interested in project updates or...
Yeah.
Of those, is that redundant to what we've already covered?
Well, can't that be part of reports? No, I mean, we do have some commissioner reports.
Oh.
We have new business and old business, I mean, like...
Yeah.
You want to do it in there?
Sure.
I mean, does it have to be a specific?
That's fine.
I don't know.
Yep, so we'll do project updates in there. Anything else? Old business and new business can cover an awful lot of stuff if we pick up things there as we go along. All right, so...
Motion to approve adjusted agenda.
Wait, can I read it back?
Sure.
All right. So we still got the recap or follow-up on our last meeting, which was in May. And then we've got talking about communication and working together. We've got an item about website, minutes, agenda posted on websites. And three, or I guess four, is the new Energy Coordinator and committee and what they're up to. All good?
Aye.
All, all in favor of changing the agenda as stated, who say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, so there's the agenda. All right, so, next is communication from the audience, O'Rice has departed.
That's a quick one.
So that's a quick one. So recap on our last meeting. Does anybody have things from our last meeting? Just carry on.
It's a long time ago.
It was a long time.
We decided that we would lead again.
We did, which was good. All right, moving along. Communication and working together, so lines of communication, do you want to lead this off, Lynn?
I, I, I think, and maybe this is sort of brings up some of the things. For example, the whole thing with the trails and H11 and the conservation easement. It seems to me that the problem arose out of miscommunication. You know, I don't think any of the commissioners knew that there even was an MOU related to Hardwick Trails.
Yeah, it could be, because there could have been complete turnover of the board since that was, the MOU was discussed.
Well, the MOU is in its second 10 years.
Right.
And...
I know it's been discussed since then, but it may not have been with any current board members, that's entirely possible.
Yeah, so, and I for one don't know what else may be out there in terms of agreements, policies, whatever. But nevertheless, with or without the MOU, had there been better communication, and maybe that would come from periodic reporting or looking at who's using what areas. I think that, I hope that the Electric Department would have known that there were trails in the area that were going to be impinged upon if this easement was granted. And we could have been involved in the process earlier, because it was a process that was largely being driven by ONPOR.
Right.
And A&R. And now we're in a situation where we're trying to clean it up, so that there, even if there isn't access in the winter to the particular, to particular trails, that we don't have a 25-year period when there can be no expansion even in the summertime.
Right, so let's, I think for that particular issue, probably the best course would be for the Hardwick Trails Committee to do periodic updates to the Hardwick Electric Board, also to the Hazen Board and to this Board. I periodically do minor updates to the Select Board, just because I'm here. But we actually haven't been to the Hazen Board in a number of years either. And years are too long, roughly, so it probably ought to be at least annual.
Yeah, the MOU actually, and I apologize, I read it last month, so I'm going on my recollection of last month. The MOU did envision regular communication and specifically communication before there was any new development, new construction.
Which makes sense.
Which makes a lot sense.
Yeah.
It anticipates for all stakeholders, so...
Yeah.
I, I would suggest, Lynn, that that's what we'd kind of go back to the MOU and say, "Let's, let's make sure we have a no less than annual," or when there's some expansion or new initiative.
Yeah.
And, and my suggestion, I'm just speaking at Hardwick Electric, I kind of like the idea of all the interested parties.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and...
Because this time, we ran into a problem, the next time it might be the school or it might be...
Right. So, which is why, I mean, I did come to Hardwick Electric Board to offer an update on the trails, but it was a little late.
Yeah, I mean, as I...
For that purpose. I mean, the trails that were pinched had been there quite a long time, but, you know.
Yeah, no, I think the process started, and Mike, you probably know when, when the whole issue started percolating at A&R, but that's when everybody should have been brought on board. Because that would have been the real opportunity to intervene with A&R and say, "Wait a second. There needs, this needs to be done in a way that addresses everybody's interests and not just A&R's interests."
Right, and so there, at least some sort of annual update would have been really helpful, like with absent any major trail development at all, just to have somebody coming in as a reminder that the trails are still out there would have been good.
You know, I mean, as far as the trails are concerned, I think at least this Board has a heightened sensitivity. If, if anybody is looking at doing anything associated with the land, we're, we're well on notice. But there, there may be other things, and I think it's just, when, when things come up, I think we need to be thinking more broadly, but I think also the Select Board or other entities in the town, you know, whether it's, whether it's David or whether it's, you know, members of the Select Board, need to be bringing things to us early in the process, because that's when they're easiest to deal with.
Yeah. Yeah. Along the lines of communication and along the lines of that conservation easement, do you feel that's the kind of thing that probably should have come to the Select Board as well as to the Hardwick Electric Board of Commissioners?
Are we talking property now?
Well, and you're talking about granting an easement, right?
Yeah, well, I think, I, I think the whole property issue, and I don't think that's, that this is a good forum to get into it in detail.
Okay.
And I, and I think it's probably something that we should get legal advice on. But it's, it's complicated. My, I can tell you what my understanding is based on a letter that's, what, from 1989? So it's a few years ago. Is that title, the title on, you know, the name on the deed is the Village of Hardwick. Functionally, it's the Electric Department, because it's electric property from the standpoint of rate base. It's used for electric service, and as a result, the property can't be sold. Nothing can be done unless the Electric Department consents to it and the PUC proves it. So it's, it's a really peculiar...
But you'd also need the town to consent, too.
The town, I think, needs to consent as well, yeah. And, and I, and I think that that probably has not been done in every case. And that's, again, this is something that we're just finding out about. And it's, it's, it's a weird, we're, we are a weird beast, because we are on a certain level, we're regulated, but we're independent from a governance standpoint from the town, but we are part of the town. I suppose in a way it's similar to the school district, except that the school district isn't even as much part of the town. It's really its own district. It's not part of the town, it's not part of the town from a charter standpoint, whereas we are. Where does the enterprise fund term come in?
That's what it is.
Right, that's what the Electric Department has. Well, that's not what the town, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't use that term in the term.
No.
It's interesting, I was digging through documents trying to follow up with Eric here over the last day or two. And right after the village and the town joined in 88 or whatever, all the stuff from the general manager, or not all the stuff, a couple of things I found from the general manager at HED was being signed up as Hardwick Electric, Town of Hardwick doing business as the Hardwick Electric Department. I thought that was pretty interesting, but I think that's closer to accurate as to what this relationship is.
Like it's sort of a...
We're all the same corporation.
Can I have a communication recommendation?
Yeah.
Do that. I also, so we also have this opportunity of meetings when we have either a commissioner or you, Mike, coming to make reports about the department. Personally, I feel like it's great to hear about projects, but I think that's also an opportunity to have a conversation, too. So if there's either a question that might, that the commissioners might have, or if there's something, I think this happened at two meetings ago when the pilot came up, because the assessors brought, brought in and changed information. We had a conversation with Mike and said, "Oh, we should bring this back to the commissioners, because this is new for us." And then I just think it's an opportunity, that's an opportunity where we're almost twice a month, if not monthly, communicating with each other.
Monthly, yeah.
To, to maybe get a little bit deeper than just reports on projects and ask questions like, "Oh, this came up at our meeting," or, "Or we will be talking at our commissioners' meeting about this project." We really would, and this happens sometimes, but I do think it's an opportunity face-to-face, it's already built in, that we can maybe capitalize on a little bit more.
The difficulty with that is that the commissioners who aren't here aren't part of that discussion. And no one commissioner speaks for the Board.
Well, I just mean, I don't, I don't mean that you have to have a conversation about property, that's, you're misunderstanding.
No, 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 I'm not talking about property, I'm talking about if there's an issue. I think it's important for everybody to hear what it is, or if there's a concern, and not to be getting it through a filter of one person. Or vice versa, for the Select Board, to be getting one commissioner's view of something rather than what the Board's view on it is. So in that, I mean, to the extent, if, if, if there's a message that needs to be relayed, I mean frankly, we can use email, too, which is to send something and let us know. And I, I think Eric has, you've been doing that more, which is great.
Tried.
No, and...
It's a little hit or miss.
I just mean something general, like at our next commissioners' meeting, we are going to be discussing the H11 project. And we welcome everybody to come to the meeting. Or at our next meeting, we might be talking about, and we could do the same thing, too, and say that there's something coming up in our agenda that we really recommend Mike come to, because maybe it's a conversation about EV stations in town, or whatever it is. I just think that's a, we could certainly send emails. I'm just trying to point out that that's a point where we're already communicating.
We have been inviting members of the Select Board to come to our meetings for years. That's an open invitation, and no one ever comes.
Eric has.
That's, I'm sorry, sorry, Eric, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
He was all sweaty, showed up in his T-shirt. What's this, what's gonna take, like, donuts, coffee?
But I do, I do think that if there is a specific, because this happens in the same, the Select Board meetings. It's like, come to a Select Board meeting, it's like, oh, okay. But if we were, if you were to say, there's, there's something that we really feel like, I agree with you, I want to come to a meeting. I usually have meetings that are happening at the same time. But, but I would be more inclined to come to a meeting if I knew there was going to be a conversation about something that, because I don't know, I don't necessarily know what you're going to be talking about, and that's my fault. But I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, like, in-person point could be an opportunity for us to...
Maybe the thing to do is, is, is if we can get our agenda out earlier and send it to all of you.
Or have it on the website.
You know, and have it on the website, and, 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 but even, you know, it's no big deal to send out an...
Sure, that would be great.
An email. That way, you see what's on the agenda. Which, again, doesn't mean that the agenda doesn't change, but it's, it's a stab at it.
Yeah.
Going back to eliminating the miscommunication or lack of communication, or something which is, you know, no one did intentionally, and rather than making it an ad hoc solution, like have it, you know, anytime there's a decision-making, decision-making process, if something's going to be decided on, the interest parties, interested parties are informed, just like a butters are informed when something's going to be done, you know, like, has something in the zoning, or somebody's going to be building. So a contract comes up like that, it's examined for interested parties, and then notification is given. And the other things that you're talking about are more, are more discussion, general discussion. But just trying to avoid the ad hoc, you know, like, how to standardize the communication to avoid the kind of thing that, that we're, you know, you're talking about with H11.
I disagree with you, Vince, I think it's very difficult to know who the interested parties may be. I think if we get things up on the website and we, and we get the agenda out to the Board, to the Select Board, that's, that's, that's a start, but...
Yeah, it, yeah, you're not, you're not going to cover everything, but at least due diligence has been done as far as, you know, okay, well, there's going to be this project, there are going to be things happening. At least a good faith attempt can be made to have the interested parties informed. You know, not on an ad, you know, like I said, not on an ad hoc basis, because then you end up having this kind of 10-year interval and information disappears. Instead of embedding it as part of the process of informing. You're, you're right, notification is, is perfect, but not everyone always sees a notification. I mean, I don't see stuff that I wish I had in lots of cases.
So I think in the case, though, of the deer-wintering yard, H11, Hardwick Trails thing would have helped a lot there, would have been if the trails had been sending a representative to Hardwick Electric meetings at least like once a year or so. I think that would have been, then it would have been something that at least you would have had a fair chance of being aware of, rather than me showing up at the point where I was like, "Oh, you know, I want to, we want to do this new trail, so I want to come talk to you," and then...
And the Board didn't know about it either, in, in any detail, before, before, at, at a point where anything could have been done. And that's something that we are addressing, trying to get better information flows.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring up one other thing while we're on communication, and that is the recent Errors and Omissions Report that Kaylee referenced, that her assessor brought to us about, they're listed as parcels, but I believe it's plant, it's like your physical plant, but it's not real estate, I don't think.
Correct, one of them is our transmission facilities, and one is the distribution facilities.
Yeah, so, you know, in our communications, it wasn't even clear really what those things were. And I'm just wondering, like, I, so Michael happened to be at our Select Board meeting when it came up, and we were all like deer in the headlights, because it was a big jump and big value. We were like, wow, I don't know if we should be approving this, so we didn't that first night. Michael said he would take it back, I also followed up with an email, I think, to Mike and Lynn, just as a heads up. But is that, did that communication go okay?
Well, went to everyone the next day.
Yeah, okay.
Then it seems like something, nothing happened for a little bit till recently, when I saw some emails going back and forth.
It's, I, I think the place where the communication broke down was to say, "Don't do anything at your next meeting either."
Oh, yeah, we didn't get that memo.
Right, I'm saying that, that, because we still didn't know what the, what the numbers were.
Right.
And I don't know, you know, at this point, if there's anything that can be done to say to, I don't know if that's been sent on to the, to the state at this point, or...
Oh, probably.
You know, if there's any way to say to the state, "Hey, hold on a second, we're not sure, we, we're not sure about these," because I gathered from Mike that there are issues with the numbers.
So if there are issues, I think...
Talk to Matt.
Yeah, talk to Matt, like, we, probably we would want another Errors and Omissions, where we come to us, and so...
But then videos will change it.
I think that's exactly what would happen, and I don't think that this is, I really don't think this is a problem.
No, I don't think, I don't think it is.
Yeah, they, whatever, I was trying to circle back with your team today to get a, whatever the origins are of our existing pilot, philosophy, plan, contract, whatever it is, I don't have that. I can't find that. But there must have been something that where the town and the Electric Department agreed, agreed, "Here's what we're going to do for a pilot program instead of charging you property taxes."
Well, we can't charge you property taxes, because you are us.
Right, so we're exempt, but there was a plan made between the parties somewhere that set up this pilot program.
It'd be interesting to know what that was.
And from then until this new document that came out with the new values, none of those values were updated through the years, is my understanding from the DA.
But what, but why is something involving property tax based on electric plant and service? It doesn't, I mean, because, because property tax is a tax on real property, it's not a tax on, on effectively personal property.
But that's, yeah, that's what the state does.
It's the Public Utility Board, or...
The legislature sets the law, that does this calculation. The tax department actually runs the calculation and then says, "Here, Town of Hardwick, here, Town of Grasberry, here, Town of..."
How does, how does, how do the amounts relate to our plant and service for rate purposes?
So we give them all our polls, number of customers, miles of this type construction, that type construction, and they run a calculation and say, "Okay, in Hardwick, you have this many dollars, and that's the new formula number." The last number was 4.200,000 dollars, last, the year before, it was a little less. It looked to me like the number never got updated.
No.
But that would make sense to me if there was an agreement based back in the day on this dollar figure.
Oh, a hard number.
And it never got updated.
But my, my question is, our rates are based on our plant, on the value of our plant and service, as, as seen by the Public Utility Commission. And if you, I don't remember what, what the number is now, and I, and as I say, I just got the email from me this morning, so I haven't had a chance.
The pilot was charging us about 65 to 70,000 dollars. And under the new equation, at today's tax rate, would be 165,000 dollars, roughly.
But that's, but that's something yet to be discussed, right? That was just, like, if you did the same calculation on this new value, this is what it results in.
I think we need to dig up, there must be a copy of this agreement or some documents that we can find somewhere and resurrect this discussion.
And just for clarity, in terms of like the Select Board taking, like approving those Errors and Omissions Reports, we felt like it was important to do that, mostly not related to the value, but because through a clerical error in our system, those properties had been changed from exempt to taxable, which affected our grant list, and we needed to get those out of our grant list. And so the revised Errors and Omissions that we voted on, which were not the original ones I sent you, had an additional sentence that said, "And change to exempt." And we needed that, and we needed to get that through our process back to the state, so the state could calculate the education tax on the appropriate grant list. So we needed to get that.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a criticism.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's why...
It was a different driver.
Yeah, there was two circles there spinning within each other.
So we had a discussion that was kind of like, all right, we need to do this. We don't really understand where these values are coming from, but it probably doesn't matter, and we can deal with it later with Hardwick Electric.
Which sounds like we can't.
So it sounds like a next agenda item or a next meeting item would be the pilot, or at least a smaller meeting to talk about the history of the pilot and the future of the pilot.
Is, if there's some way of digging out what the basis was for it in the past, but I would guess we're not bound by, by how it was done in the past at any rate.
No, but sometimes it's nice, because if people documented, kind of like the MOU for the Hardwick Trails, like, it's nice to be like, oh, look, somebody already thought about this.
Well, and maybe there's a 10-year renewal on it.
Right, that's why I was trying to find it, because I was like, well, is there any provision that should set us up better than we've landed?
So we recently learned that Alberta Miller has been town clerk for 20 years. And so she may actually, she may, she may know how to put her hands on, no, never mind, I'm getting this. Free name's Alberta Miller.
She has to do some research herself.
So she's researching.
She's been looking for the...
For the origin?
Yes.
I just started looking today, too. We have oodles of files from Joyce Bellavant's days that I'm suspecting there's probably a copy of this thing in her stuff, so... But it's not going to be a day finding it, it's going to be a couple of weeks of digging through stuff.
I wonder if Bill Davies would help with that. Surely he was involved in that discussion.
That's a good idea.
What about the past, the past managers?
Oh, we have to figure out where...
88-ish?
So that'd be, I think that'd be Bill Pickens.
I don't know, I wasn't here yet.
For us, it'd be Bob Giovanni or whoever.
Asking for... But it's in 87, 88, I think Bill Pickens was the manager there.
Around the time of the merger.
I think it was, I think it was his idea of checking with, with Bill Davies.
And I think Paul Giuliani might.
Yeah, actually, all be a good resource on that, too, yeah.
So we'll talk to Bill, you talk to Paul?
And you guys, and people will keep digging in their respective offices to try to see if there's any...
Yeah, I would bet we have one, it's just a matter of finding it.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I would hope that there was something other than just that simple calculation sheet. She doesn't give you any other detail about what's going on, and, yeah.
And would that have gone through the town clerk at the town manager's office?
Yeah, but it currently goes through the clerk.
Clerk, I would say.
Pilot payments go through the clerk.
It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah. And all other, and the 10 other towns, HED must pay this tax.
Yeah, we're not even, all the existing ones.
It's not pilot, it's tax, yeah. Yeah. All right, any other communication things?
We just briefly touched on the website in terms of agenda, but it came, it came up at our last meeting that seeing the minutes would be good. And so we had asked about how the website was going and what...
Right, so minutes are, are one thing, but the, we are having, our, the local TV channel has initiated getting our stuff on video every month now, so that's posted by them.
Yeah.
As far as our minutes go on our website, we are about... So that's posted by them. Um, as far as our minutes go on our website, we are about, I would guess, at least three weeks away from our new website. And there's a major Joomla security error with our existing website, where the developer doesn't even wanna touch our website. Um, and we can't put minutes up on that site right now. Um, so I got a note here to, as far as agendas go, to get them to you directly for the interim. But, yeah, that'll all be fixed, but it's not ready yet.
So it's December?
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, hopefully December. And I don't know what Joomla is, but apparently that's some protocol that has to be built into the website to have sufficient security levels, because we had customers going in, paying their bills and all that kinda stuff in there, too, so.
Yeah, it would be helpful when that's up, if we had a link specifically to wherever the minutes and agendas are going to be from our website. So that way, if somebody was, I think a lot of people go to our website to look at minutes and agendas. If there was a link to your website saying, check out the minutes and agendas, would be a good...
Oh, we do have, we do have a link to the HED website.
But like specifically to the page where it's gonna be on, I don't know how complicated the website's gonna be.
Well, he's, this is...
Well, that's something that we can redo on our side.
No, that's what I'm saying, but we could, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you, when I tried to find the agenda today, I got an error message.
It's not easy.
Oh, really?
Yeah. When I tried to get onto the select board section of the Hardwick website, yeah.
Is that still up there?
No.
So website times are tough all over.
I think that was the only other communication thing.
Okay. Uh, next is the new energy coordinator and the Hardwick Energy Committee.
I'm gonna kick this one off.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, so, Bill Chitzy, we just nominated a couple months ago to be the energy coordinator. He is working on what exactly that's gonna mean for the town. And so there was the heart, which Nancy Nodderman had run for a long time, which was Hardwick Energy, uh, I had, um, but there were various projects that they had helped with in the past. And so he's really trying to look at, um, you know, things like, uh, working with Energy Vermont to promote...
Button up.
Button up the line and things like that.
Energy audits, on town properties.
Energy audit on town properties, but also on private properties, helping people know where resources are.
So imagine at some point, he'll come to the HED meeting or to the commissioners, but it's still like very early on in the process of reforming the group.
He's really trying to recruit people, because he doesn't wanna fly solo, so...
Yeah, there's not very many people involved in this thing.
Anybody is watching and is interested in, uh, the, the, um, sorry, the energy committee, um, there's a link to Bill Chitzy on our town website, hardwickvt.org, and you should contact him. You could also contact the town manager's office.
Every second Tuesday?
I don't know, I wouldn't.
It's, there's a meeting tonight.
Oh, downstairs.
I believe.
That's it.
Are these mechanical upgrades? Are they...
It's to be determined, I think.
Okay.
To be determined, but is the, I bel- the interest that he stated as a beginning point would be probably like heating type updates to town buildings.
Controls.
Controls.
Like IoT stuff?
I don't know.
You know, remote?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, if that's...
Yeah, data logging and controls of, of air handling and heaters. It's not just electricity, it's all, it's all fuels.
Right, right. And, uh, devices.
Right.
You know, it can be anything. So it's not just gonna be insulating or new windows or...
No, no. Those, those are capital contracts.
No, awesome.
Yeah. So he's got a lot of energy.
Give it to him.
But he does need, he needs some people to join him.
Yeah.
So, we need some folks.
Determined.
Yeah.
It went to sleep for quite a while there.
It did, because Nancy did a long time.
So, yeah, and it just...
Yeah, Nancy used to be pretty active.
It makes, it makes sense to look at the buildings that the town owns.
It does.
This building, for starters.
It's extremely energy efficient.
Yeah.
It's actually not that bad for being stone building.
It's gotten better.
It's gotten better. Just don't let it get cold in the dead of winter, because it takes a long time to bring it back to temperature. Um, uh, alright, so, anything else on the energy coordinator? So, that's the end of our, our things. Uh, this, next is the select board, select board and commissioner reports, when we said we would do project updates in this section. Anybody have any things to...
Well, I could talk about my little project to, um, to improve the holiday lighting in downtown. And, um, I'm finishing an application to a winter placemaking grant, little mini grant for four thousand dollars to help, uh, pay for what we've determined we need to, in order to wrap the poles, the old style poles, the fifteen poles that have banners on them, wrap them with holiday lights. Um, they would need to be, yeah, adapt, have an adapt, a way to plug in.
An outlet.
So, um, we're working on that and hopefully this little grant will pay for that. And then, we talked about lighting the trees differently, or more, um, in a more intentional way than they have been in the past. And, um, so, I think you...
Yeah, we, we talked about having, you know, a day of people in a truck to help do trees. But did you get an electrician to look at those poles?
Yes.
Today, so we looked at it, so it was yesterday. So we're waiting for that bid, but, um, so we're still working on that. But the trees, you know, yeah.
Which, are we just talking about the trees by the diner parking lot, or...
There, those, there are four trees, and then there's, there's a tree in the, uh, by the peace park, there's the one by the bridge. We could potentially do, you know, do those as well. Um, but, my little proposal was that we, uh, change it up and have like red, green, blue, and gold maybe, instead of just white, and then have just white on the poles.
Ha.
Um, sort of, but this year, you know, if we don't get the grant, or if we do, I mean, we have, um, Tom has counted up, done an inventory of the lights that we have now. Granted, those are a combination of cool and warm whites. Just saying.
So it's different colors.
I'm a little, you know, I kinda like to have it all be one, but, you know, this is what we have. So, um, yeah. And I was just asking Opie before the meeting whether we knew when the guys, when the town crew guys generally do that stuff, and it seems like it's around now. So rather than have them do work that we would rather have done differently, or I would rather have done differently, um...
You're gonna get a header.
Just saying, I'm just putting it out there, that, yeah. I don't know. And if you're, if the electric department guys can help us with that, then I'm sure the town crew would love to take that little project off their list of things. Looking at Opie. He can say anything he wants.
So what you're saying is you wanna have a, a joint holiday lighting party with Hardwick Electric and some of the town guys?
That's my proposal.
With the use of the bucket truck, so we can get into the higher places and put a, a good spin on the lights?
Indeed, yeah.
Or in the bush.
Not the poles yet.
So rather than, uh, like, throwing it into the branches, yeah.
So Lynn brought this to, uh, to the board at our last meeting, it was very well received. And I checked in with Brian about what had been done historically. And he said, yeah, the electric department used to help every year do it. And it was, uh, kind of a falling out of that, uh, activity once the poles got removed that went down Main Street and just the decorative lighting went in. But he said, you know, it was never a problem, that the guys kinda enjoyed doing it, so...
Well, then let's just revive that activity.
Maybe we can play a little music, too.
Yeah.
While, while they're doing it.
Well, yeah. I mean, I think that the downtown commission will come up with ideas of having it be more of an event when it, when the lights go on or something, but I don't think that's gonna happen this year.
Yeah, if you could get us a plan, you know, we might be able to save you some money on getting outlets installed, if we can just put flying hinges up to stuff, so...
Outlets on the trees, right.
Kinda be up on the wall, we're the only ones with access, I don't mind.
No, it's the lights, the light poles, the small light poles. There's fifteen of them.
The sort of...
Decorative ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are a problem. Well, you gotta, I mean, you could put a, you could put a socket in those fixtures that has an outlet and receive the ball, so it might be pretty simple.
Oh, you mean up at the top?
That's what we had an electrician do.
Yeah.
Look at, and we want the outlets on the top, so they don't get unplugged.
Yeah, exactly.
Worse, if people aren't charging their phones in the middle of the side.
Right, yeah, no free, no free phone charging stations.
You know that.
I mean, I would do that.
Isn't that a public service that could be provided?
Phone charging, yeah.
Public phone charging. So Opie's gonna coordinate some of that.
Yeah, that's great.
And then, yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
And Mike, you were, you were, one of the two of you guys said that it would probably be important that it be clear that Hardwick Electric Crew isn't in charge.
Right.
You know, it's...
We're assisted.
Why not? Opie's still, he's not, he's not handing this over.
Right.
The, the crew is helping. Sort of reporting for duty for a day of helping.
We could certainly help.
Because it could be on its nest, you know?
Ah, I'll, yeah, I'll delegate Tom to be in charge, how's that?
Oh, Sherry wants to be in charge.
No.
I second it, I second it.
I just want it to be done right.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll make sure that it's done right, Sherry.
Can you switch the lights?
Do it right. If you're gonna do something right, you know you have to do it yourself.
Yeah.
I've always said that.
I, I, I believe in this team, that I don't have to...
It's a dream team. Alright, this is great. Any other projects that people are thinking about? Or any other reports that people wanna make about anything, really?
I, I think, you know, we are trying to, um, improve the situation, um, in terms of conservation, to ease things up. But that's probably gonna take some more time.
Yeah.
I, I can just tell you that the, we did re-engage with the, um, environmental consultant, and they've identified a couple areas to propose to A and R to move things around. Um, and I haven't seen that proposal yet, but I expect to see it literally any day.
And so that's the kind of thing, from a communications standpoint, that once we get that, that needs to go to, to everybody, to make sure that...
It wasn't the next place you were going.
That we don't make things worse instead of making things better.
Be right in the middle of the trails.
Right.
Speaking of communications, um, one of, one of the volunteers at the Historical Society asked me today, why the electric department does not include a report in the annual town reports anymore?
We do.
We do.
Um, we do.
You do?
Yep.
Yeah. Mike writes it every year.
Every year, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't read it closely enough to remember if it was there or not, but you do, I will tell her that it's there. She just needs to go back and read it.
Yeah, Alberta sends me that. I need that email every year, so.
That was easy, that was good.
Constituent service?
That's it.
So the, so I was in a little discussion with Gary Holloway from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And he asked about the EV charger potential in Hardwick. Apparently, somebody from the co-op contacted him, hoping that they would be able to put an EV charger outside of the new co-op space or something. And so he, yeah, Buffalo, my god. And so he, um, he said, was there anything, yeah, he, I guess they contacted him because he was somehow involved in the state thing that was trying to...
Yeah.
And Hardwick was identified as one of the places where they were. But we haven't heard anything else from that.
Oh, yeah, does anybody know?
Um, yeah, so that's one question. And the other one was that he, um, he said that, uh, is it Norwich something or other?
One of the developers, yeah.
The developer had told, had said to him that they were having trouble working with Hardwick Electric because of the exuberant demand charge.
Exuberant.
Exuberant, not everybody has a...
He said, he used the word exuberant. I wrote it down, because I thought, what the hell does that mean? Anyway, but apparently, pretty much power has waived all demand fees for their project.
No, they, they, they still have demand fees, but they have time of use rates.
Yeah.
And our demand charges don't kick in until you hit thirty KW or more.
So, of course, I'm not understanding any of that.
So if you reach X amount of power needs on a charger, then you would go to a demand rate. But a level two charger is only about seven KW, so you could run four of those before you would have to worry about any demand charges.
So how are we, are, are you working with them, or what's happening?
The issue that I ran into, and I believe it was with Norwich, too. Norwich and one other developer was trying to identify sites in Hardwick, because there was money available to, to install these stations. The problem was the areas they targeted, we, we don't have a pole there, we don't have a power, I mean, you'd have to run secondaries across Main Street, which is not gonna happen over to a pole.
Because we tried to suggest places, like at the end of the building where the clip joint is, where there's already...
Yeah, they had like three, three areas, and this is quite a while ago, but they had three specific areas that were like their highest profit, whatever, targeted areas. And we couldn't access them with our stuff. So somebody, they, or the property owner or somebody would have to do, spend some pretty good money to get facilities in place for us to serve that.
So where are we at with having EV chargers in Hardwick?
That's the last I've heard about EV chargers.
Because they're selling electric cars at the Moyle Valley, so...
I think, yeah, my, my personal bias is that this is where the world's going.
It's where it's headed.
We might as well team up and figure it out.
My, 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 my personal bias is that, is, I think it's something that we needed the electric department to be talking about, because if people...
They are going in, like, the health center just put in a station, the, uh, Moyle Valley Ford just put in, they're putting in four huge ones.
They already had one, right?
Well, we need it downtown for people who are...
They had two, they're putting in four of the, the sixty KW units.
But, but people are putting in private...
Those are taking care of people who were working at those locations.
No, no, no.
It's a car wash, anybody can use.
Anybody can use.
Oh, at the car washes.
Yeah, but who's gonna walk downtown?
So can you maybe explain to the board the, the infrastructure you would need? You just said the secondaries, but explain it in layman's terms, like what the assets that would need to be.
Right, so basically, the wires that the customer has to put in to connect to our system need to be put in by somebody. We don't own those, those are not, that's the world of electricians, we don't do that work, it's not in our, that's under the National Electric Code, we operate under the National Electric Safety Code, which are two very distinct, different areas of the electric industry in the country.
So basically, so if I understand, if we were, if the Town of Hardwick was to say, we wanna put four EV stations in the diner parking lot, as an example, we're gonna hire Norwich to do this piece, and that's gonna connect with HED, is that basically what HED needs?
That's what needs to happen.
Unless, unless...
But what about this consideration of where the lines are?
Right, so for example, if Sherry wanted to do something in front of her store, we have no way to access the wires.
No, but like at the end of the, you know, the, the town owns that little shitty parking lot that is the end of the, of the clip joint building.
That would work.
And that's all, it's all there.
Will the town own the EV charger, or, 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 because it, because...
I don't know.
Or the co-op, say, for instance, the...
Or at the co-op, because they wanted to...
So you said that you'd have to run a prime, or secondary under the road or above the road?
Yeah, I don't know how you...
So, you don't have the infra, Hardwick Electric doesn't have the infrastructure there right now to be able to support charging stations?
Not on Main Street there, no.
Right, so I think that's what we need to look at as a group, of where we can do it.
Where is it easy?
And what's feasible and what's not.
And we did look, a couple of years ago, we did look, because I thought there was discussion about the parking lot by the village, by the, you know, village restaurant, but of putting something in there. I think there was some discussion about in parking lot at where Tops and Walgreens are.
Yes, yes.
Um, but I think there's also a question, in, in my mind at least, who's gonna own these things? Are these gonna be for-profit chargers, where the prices are gonna be higher than if it's something that the, that the electric department does and, and maintains, or that the town does and maintains? Um, you know, it could be a source of revenue for the town.
So maybe what the town could do is ask that question of ourselves, and maybe what So maybe what the town could do is ask that question of ourselves and maybe what HED could do, cause I thi, I do think that this is coming and that.
Yeah, definitely.
We've been, we've all been thinking about it for a long time and, and with the F-150 coming out, it's like, yeah, we gotta do it. So if, if, cause we have all those, we have great maps of downtown, if, if, because you know this information, Mike. If you were able to just circle, here are areas where it's actually feasible.
Yeah.
And then we were to talk about, okay, who's gonna fund, like, are these gonna be public, who's gonna fund it, where's the money gonna come from? And that seems like more of a town.
I think it, it would be easier to do in a collaborative setting.
I totally agree.
Look at the map and said, these are places where we think that it makes sense for the town. And then, Mike, what's the scene for infrastructure there? Is that, is that easy or is it hard?
Talking about is where the mural is, right?
No.
No, that actual across the road.
Where the clip joint.
Where the village market is.
Oh, no, yeah.
Okay.
The, 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 no, 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 no.
She's, Sherry's talking about at the end of South Main Street where it turns to Mill Street, right by Tracy's Clip Joint.
Oh, 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 okay.
Where that tiny little, very unorganized parking areas where my great grand, great aunt had her drugstore that burned down in the eighties. So there's that and there's all that power and everything on the side of that building. It just seems like it lends itself to.
But the co-op is also looking at buying the village market and there's parking in front of there.
Yeah.
And there's, I would think there's gotta be some infrastructure.
Oh, that's right there, that'd be a good spot.
Yeah, but that would also be a good spot.
The parking lot with the mural is all set up too.
That's also a good spot, that would be good. Wow, that's a lot of good spots.
Right there, yeah.
So, no, so we don't have to run any new secondaries or anything?
The secondary is already there.
Okay.
The, the one, the one, I think, I think we should, you know, we should be identifying places. And, and it, it's not just places, but it's also what kind of chargers. Are, you know, are, are they, you know, because there are three levels of, of chargers.
You guys would know best.
Uh, well, it depends, it, it depends what people are willing to, to pay and, um, and how fast, what people are gonna be using the chargers for.
120.
Because I, I mean, I don't think tier one charge is probably.
No, they're a waste of time.
But, but the twos and the threes, uh, you know, it depends on the battery size, how much of it, how long it takes to get how much charge, but. So I, but.
So we're, we're all set up in our parking lot to sit, to install a tier two charger. I had all that fudged.
Well, those are the ones that the state is trying to put out.
Are, are these chargers that are, already have a payment system in place?
Uh, we, they do have a swipe system, but we, my plan was to put one in as a pilot to see if it was even a good location and just let, um, customers come in and show us, copy their bill or give us their account number and let them have a free charge and just see how it went. Um, that was put on hold because of COVID, because we have a new retaining wall project going on out there, which is actually gonna start next week, finally. So we didn't put the charger in so that we could tear it out and redo the wall and then put it all back in, so it's been waiting.
And, and what about, what about seeing how it would work, would, is, what kind of information were you trying to get? Just whether people were gonna use it?
Yeah, whether people, whether it was a good block to put more in or if people were gonna use it at all. And the reason I s, I was up that, uh, evaluating position is one of our sister municipals, uh, Swan Village. They, they are right on a major, uh, intersection with a couple state highways and the Interstate 89. And they have a massive, uh, park and ride there right at the interstate. And early on, probably three years ago, they had, I think, six or eight stations installed there with the swipe systems and everything. And, uh, to this day, they pay more in credit card fees for those services than they get in revenue from all those stations.
Yeah, they were, they were, three years ago, there were no, there were very few electric cars.
Understood.
And that's gonna, that's gonna change. But, but the other point that I was gonna make, I think identifying so that we're ready to move when, when we can't. There's gonna be money coming with, um, the infrastructure bill. And I don't know who's gonna be eligible for it, uh, but we need to, we really need to look into that because we don't wanna be paying for things that we don't need to be paying for if we can be getting grant money. Whether it's, you know, whoever that grant money is going through, so we just need to be mindful of that.
So, Mike, the, the meeting in December, uh, is there an agenda, this is a, is legislative, or, the meeting you were talking about? I, I can't remember with whom it was, but, uh.
With our local legislators, yeah.
Legislators, okay, so basically to inform their, or convince them of the necessity of certain things to be able to advocate for funding?
Well, it's to share anything and everything.
Anything and everything, okay.
Hardwick Electric with our local legislative legislators, yeah, with VEPSA and Linden Dole Electric, because we share a lot of local legislators.
Which, what, that's the, what's the date, let me?
That is the third Monday in December, whatever date that's.
So, and, and the, the grant money, uh, I mean, they're for specific products have to be submitted for the grants, correct?
That meeting isn't about any specific grant.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying money that's gonna be coming through, so.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, depend, yeah, we don't know yet. I mean, like the art money, for example, we just, the town got a chunk of money.
Just a block, just a block of money.
Or a block rules about what we could spend it on.
No.
But you don't have to.
Okay, thanks.
No, no jackets.
Legislature, let me.
You know, we don't know.
To all you or just you?
Send it to everybody.
Send it to me too, don't forget me.
So, yeah, I love that, so what, um, what's the follow-up on?
So I just wanna be clear, that's not a.
It's a Hardwick Electric informational meeting with your.
Meeting about the power business.
Yep, so don't come to the meeting.
No, you can come.
Asking for money from them.
Right, that's not what it's about.
Money's for you.
No, it is, it isn't even about that.
It's informational.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's more, uh, you know.
We'll be quiet.
We're, we're looking for support to, uh, get, so automated metering infrastructure.
Yeah.
Is a huge issue for us, it's coming, it's, we have to have it to have time of use rates you're talking about. And it's gonna be a 1.1 to 1.2 million dollar investment. So right now in the state, several utilities have it, um, and then the only reason they got it was because the feds gave them 65% of the cost to do it. Otherwise it's not, uh, the, the model does not pay for itself. So we've been pushing our legislators to say, hey, we, we'll do it too, give us some similar deal. So those are the kind of things we wanna talk about.
And, I mean, it, it would allow for demand side control too, which, you know, it's good, work for peach shaving.
The time of use rates will, yeah.
And, uh, once storage builds out with, with vehicles, you know, those can be used as storage because of the meter controls. I mean, it takes additional controls, but it just allows a much more modulated, can't allow for a much more modulated, uh, energy demand. Just bringing that, the peak demand down. I mean, does that sound correct, Mike?
You could play all kinds of games with stored, stored energy, yes.
And the legislature, or the state anyway, is sitting on a fair amount still of recovery money.
Those are the money we're trying to talk to them about, yeah.
And they're trying to figure out how to spend it.
So, I mean, the new Ford, for example, the truck Ford truck that's coming out is a 120 kilowatt hours. That can be, you know, obviously needs to be integrated, but, you know, that can be a, a, um, a production resource too. You know, it, that.
For storage.
For, for storage, yeah, but, you know, like, uh, yeah, anyway, it's, it's a lot of things.
Just to recap on the EV.
Energy.
No, first, let me just do something first.
Sure, sure.
So, uh, can, can we say that OP and Mike are gonna do this thing about find, about finding those, identifying those spots that we just talked about?
Sure, we can do that.
That would work?
Sure.
And would be, yeah, okay, that'd be great.
Treasure hunt.
Sorry, yeah, you can go.
No, it just seems like the only other piece of that puzzle is figuring out who's gonna own them and who will, whether that's a third-party HED or.
Yeah, the town.
I think, I think going back to what Lynn said, um, we ought to look at what funding is out there and how that can work. Cause, you know, if it's, if there's funding that could come to a municipality.
Right.
And it looks better if the, if the municipality does it, then we can work together that way. There's a lot of this funding that's coming recently, could come to the municipality and we can pass it off. So that's possible too.
Yeah, no, there's, there's all kinds of possibilities and, and it may be that if it, the funding is for private funding, but then maybe that means that in, in, that there's some negotiation under the contracts with whoever's doing it to make sure that the rates that they're charging are gonna be within a certain range. So that, um, Hardwick doesn't become the, uh, most expensive place in the state to, to charge it, right?
Cause you don't want that.
I'm sorry?
Don't want that.
No, but, and the other thing is, I mean, yeah, I guess I'm personally leery about huge investment right now cause we don't really know what the use patterns are gonna be. And, um, like Mike's pointing out, like a park and ride by 89 maybe wasn't the best choice three years ago, but maybe now, today in downtown Hardwick, maybe that's good because maybe somebody's gonna park there and go to the diner while their car charges or they're gonna go to Ponte High or whatever.
Probably just gonna be downtown, I just, I, yeah, my concern a little bit is that being up here, HED doesn't necessarily bring them down. But we're gonna do all we can to bring them down from the trail, so maybe it's right on the trail.
Right, well, that's, that was part of the, one of the last meetings I had with the team from, uh, B-Trans on the rail bed. Was, uh, I was trying to get them to let us use a little more of the right-of-way and was promoting us having a potential charging station there for people who are using the trail and they were very excited about that, so.
And, and parking.
Yeah.
And there's a parking lot, I said, there's a parking lot here that's empty every weekend.
Exactly. Yeah.
Hey, just advertising right at the chargers for town businesses.
Yeah.
I think, you know.
So the beauty of us being involved with the charger is be fully regulated under the PUC. It would only be for, uh, recovering our costs, there's no profit in it for us. Um, so as far as the consumer goes, we would be the best one to use, driving that train.
You wouldn't have the demand charge?
Uh, after we go to time of use rates, you can charge at different times and pay different rates during the day. So if it was during peak hours, say seven o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning, you're gonna pay top dollar. If you're doing it seven o'clock to nine o'clock at night, you're gonna pay a lot less. That's how it works.
In the commission, it's 63%.
Sherry's got another meeting coming.
I have to be at that meeting too.
Huh?
I have to be at that meeting too.
All right.
This is exciting, that's a good note to end on.
Yeah, it is, lots of interesting, yeah, lots of interesting stuff.
So the town doesn't own the lot where the mural is?
Yes, the town does.
Yeah, it's a town, it's like.
That's a perfect spot, perfect.
Yeah.
There are lots.
Does that provide enough space from the retaining wall in?
I put the charger right on the retaining wall.
Okay, so a car could pull up tight?
Pull right up tight.
Nice.
Just above the plow line.
Yeah. That would be preferred.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, uh.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
We're adjourned, thank you everyone, this is, uh, productive, oh. Uh, I know we just adjourned, but we need to, uh, what's our, when are we gonna, are you gonna be, is it gonna be in May, I guess?
I would do them every four months, instead of every six months.
Or quarterly.
Or quarterly, I'm trying to get an ease into it.
Hey, quarterly.
That would help with communication.
May was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So February.
So when's the next water and sewer bill due? It's due next week, so.
Oh, when do it, when the water and sewer bill is due?
Yeah, basically, next quarter.
On, uh, on the audience.
Just saying.
I'm sorry, it was kind of a joke. No, I just didn't hear what you said.
Didn't know anything.
They're meeting downstairs.
Oh, they're meeting downstairs.
So, um, so we're looking for February?
Yeah.
And, and what's his name?
Bill.
Chitzi.
It's a family name or something.
Thank you. Hey, I'm gonna go day it is, there we are.
CHI, CHI or something.
Nozzi.
Nozzi.
H-I-D, S-E-Y.
Today's the ninth, we could.
Eight?
Eighth could, eighth could work, that'd be, that'd be a Tuesday, that'd be very much like three months ahead, right?
Yeah. Yeah. February the eighth.
That's terrifying, that's only three months away.
February eighth, be there, be square, all right, thank you everyone.
February, February and three.